Okay, all right. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Common Council meeting at the City of Delafield, and I call the meeting to order. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
Which stands one nation, under God, indivisible.
Indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Woo. Okay, Michelle, if you could help us with roll call, please, but first I just want to just with the, first, I just wanted to say for the folks that are watching us on either YouTube or Channel 25 or here in the audience, we are doing a hybrid tonight. So we have common council members here in the council chambers, as you can see and hear, but we also have a few council members that are participating via speakerphone. So we're hoping it goes well. If you could do roll call, please, Michelle?
Sure. Doug Saloga.
Present.
Jim Barron. No Jim?
No Jim.
Jackie Valdi?
I am here.
Wayne Dean?
Here.
Matt Grimmer?
Here.
Phil Kason? No? I know he's here. Yeah, I thought he was. He might be on mute. Tim Iker?
Here.
Tom? Pat? Here. Ken? That will.
Present.
Thank you.
Great. Mr. Barron's just walked in the room, Michelle.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, we'll move on to public hearing number one, Gulf Road Special Assessment for City of Delafield. Reopen the public hearing regarding the special assessment to be levied against benefited property owners as a result of the construction and reconstruction of the public road known as Gulf Road and related improvements, including the installation of a roundabout. Are there any citizens here that would like to speak to this public hearing? If you're not interested, Susie, then I'll assume, since we have no one else, there's no more comments. So that public hearing is now closed. So we'll move on to Special Order of Business A, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the Special Assessment Mythology to be Utilized for the Resolution of 2020-02. Tom?
Actually, Mike, would you like to go through the different iterations that the council asked you to go through and how those turned out?
Sure. Yes, at the last meeting on March 16th, when this was public hearing and discussed, the council asked for a couple different calculation methods, and in your packet is memo on those. So ultimately, we have four different exhibits with different calculations, and then the fifth exhibit is the comparison side by side. So the first was the using the trip generation and assessed value, a 50/50 split. So that's Exhibit 1. So I don't know, I can go through all these and then maybe take some questions from there. Exhibit 2 is the trip generation and parking space requirement, which is a 50/50 split. And Exhibit 3 is the trip generation and parking space requirement, a 75/25% split. And then the Exhibit 4 is the original using that just the trip generation, and that was the original calculation. But we did do some tweaks to it, to, we looked at some of the assumptions at the last meeting. Verizon was brought up. So we looked at a couple, a couple other assumptions and tweaked that a little bit for, for that. I can go through those, maybe those tweaks, just for everybody's benefit here. With regard to the trip generation calcs, that Kohl's Lot, originally, the Kohl's Lot was two parcels, one for the Kohl's store and then one for the retail strip area just to the east, but that was combined during this process. So now the spreadsheet just shows the one parcel. Originally, we had done a takeoff of the square footage for the buildings off an aerial, the roof area, but looking at it, as far as digging into the parking space requirements, we found out that the city assessor has actual square footage. So we, we used that square footage. And then the third was taking a look at the different assigned codes from the ITE, which included the Verizon store. There was assumed value there along with famous footwear. And what we found is for IT code 826 specialty retail, that, that fit better. And then there was the assumptions on Marshalls and Sierra Home Goods stores that we cleaned up, along with verifying the employee count for the golf course maintenance facility. So all those were, I believe, have tightened up the calculations for the IT using the trip generation. So with that in mind, you know, I don't know if it makes sense to take a look at Exhibit 5 for the comparison, or if there's questions?
No. I'll leave with one question, and that is, the update you did to the trip generation calculation, is that applied into the other three where we've got a blended option?
Yes.
So we use the new?
Yeah, we used, yeah, we used the new trip generation for the 50/50 splits and the 75/25 split. Yes.
I think it's interesting how close they are. If you look at it several different ways, and it's, it's helpful to show we did the work, but they still come in.
Yeah, they, yeah, they're, I don't know if they're within 10%, but yeah, they're consistent. You gotta divide up the $650,000 some way.
Well, you know, I know this is a lot of money. I know it's over 10 years, but I've had nothing but compliments on that roundabout. And I've had people tell me that they now come to shop here because now they feel they can get in and out. And so I think there's a benefit to this, long run, to these, these stores. And from the city's standpoint, I mean, it's, it's kind of an island in the sense that it services probably the town of Delafield as much as the city of Delafield, and they all patronize those stores and, and Heartland and some of the other areas. So I think it's really reasonable, and it's just fortunate that we had one player that was willing to step up. But I think it's really improved the feel of that corner.
Anybody interested in making a motion to approve one of the options as presented?
We'll close the public hearing first.
We close the public hearing already, yeah. I'll, I'll just add that I think we've got a unified opinion between myself, the city engineer, and the city attorney.
Thank you.
That we're all very comfortable with the trip generation method. We're all reasonably comfortable with the combination of trip generation and parking blend calculations.
That would be Exhibit 3?
What was that?
Would that be Exhibit 3 that you just mentioned, the parking blend?
That'd be 3 and 4, right, Mike?
Okay.
One, one is a 50/50 blend, one's a 75/25 blend, but that we are not comfortable with the incorporation of property values into the assessment methodology, as far as that being a defensible assessment methodology. And Jim and Mike, if I, if you have a different view, please weigh in.
No, no, I concur, and we've talked about this. Frankly, I've never experienced a special assessment that uses assessed value as one of the blends.
Same with me.
And, you know, in this particular case, if you're looking at a blend, the parking makes more sense because that's more consistent with the trip generation.
I'm sorry.
The trip, the trip generation would be, I think, is the cleanest, it's been upheld by the courts, and it's used all over the state. But the other blend with parking, I think, would be an acceptable solution. A defensible solution, put it that way.
The 50/50 split for trip generation and the parking space requirement is Exhibit 2, just to correct. It's Exhibit 2 is the 50/50 split, and then Exhibit 4 is just the trip generation. I just wanted to, I think you referenced.
So 2 is 50/50, and which one is 75/25?
That's Exhibit 3.
And which one is the updated trip generation?
That's Exhibit 4.
So 2, 3, and 4 are kind of the ones that staff is comfortable with?
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to apply the Gulf Road Special Assessments via the agreement in the, in the packet, applying Exhibit 2, the 50/50 traffic and parking blend.
I'll second that.
And I'll, I'll just state, I think that since, I mean, we hold developments consistent, I mean, this is something that's right in our code about the number of parking spots we allocate and require per business. It's a clear indicator that, that's a, that's a solid measure of how much, how many cars we expect to need to house there. Good indicator how many people have to traverse the road, and same with trip generation. I'm really comfortable with that as being an equitable way to do this.
Yes, I, I want to just say that I appreciate all the time and energy that went into these different permutations. They're very helpful, and I suspect were no small amount of work. So thank you.
So you made a motion, I heard a second.
Yes.
I heard some discussion. Is there any other discussion?
I just want to be clear, we're talking about making the motion to, for Exhibit 2.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously, so we don't have to know the names. I will ask that those folks, the four folks that are on the speakerphone, we periodically hear some loud background noises. If you're not speaking, would you please mute? I know it's difficult to remember to unmute yourself, but we need to try to minimize that background noise as best we can, so we'd appreciate that. Okay, so now we will move on to B, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Resolution 2020-02, the final resolution, leaving special assessment for the public improvements relating to the construction and reconstruction of Gulf Road.
I'll move to approve Resolution 2020-02.
I'll second. Matt?
Got it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Passes.
One.
I'm sorry, was there an abstention?
Yes, yes, from Phil.
Phil, okay. Great, thank you. Okay, item number one, City of Delafield Citizens' Comments. Opportunity for any citizens that would like to speak, to speak now. Susie? Great, come on up.
Susie Thompson, 700 Milwaukee Street. Coronavirus has impacted everybody in many ways, and thank you for everybody being here tonight and for our staff that did all the cleaning and separating of things. On the agenda tonight, talking about the, the shooting site, putting that out for another 60 days because of the virus did not seem to me to be a valid reason to move it out. I have not seen a problem getting people to respond to phone calls, and I don't know if that really happened. In the long course of things, whether it gets put out 60 days or not, I don't think it's going to make a difference in the long impact on things. But to say it's because of the virus didn't seem to be a very needed opportunity to request.
Great.
Is that saying it backwards?
Thank you for your comments. All right, seeing no other citizens present, citizens' comments are now closed. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda, item number 2. Is there a motion?
I'd like to remove the, from the consent agenda, the minutes of the April 21st meeting.
Okay, just the 21st meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as?
I'll so move.
Jim Barron.
Okay. So you're moving for the April 20th minutes and item B?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Great. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay. You pulled the April 21st meeting minutes?
Yeah, I just have a correction to the minutes. Minutes failed to reflect that prior to voting for all the chairmanships by acclamation, I had asked to be removed from consideration and nomination of the dear management committee. So I have it here.
Who on your list was the alternate would become the citizen member?
Okay.
So if any mo, any motions that are made, please take into account that one correction.
Okay.
Also, at this time, this is when I'd like to respectfully decline nomination appointment to dear management.
Okay.
So you said okay, and Michelle said great. I want that added to the minutes.
Okay, sure. Is there a motion to approve the minutes with that addition?
I'll make the same motion then.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
One.
Oh, Phil, that was you abstaining?
Correct.
Great.
Not sure if it worked before, so, yes.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to three committee reports. All right, licenses? Michelle?
I have no licenses. Thank you.
Okay. 3B, Planning Commission. Oh, actually, do I need to move, what was I gonna move up, Jim? The gun, gun club?
Gun club.
Okay. Which item is that?
3B2.
Okay, I'm moving to 3B2. DLC 0825.994701 Maple Avenue, Delafield. Owner applicant, Heartland Sports Club. Would the applicant like to come up?
Well, I guess as he does, I can save some time and just use this time, I should say, just introduce the fact that the motion that was made, recommendation from the Plan Commission, based on the request to extend the, the deadline date for the sound abatement and the shooting baffle design contingent upon submitting work in progress at the next Plan Commission meeting, was, was made, and I believe it was a unanimous vote to, oh, no, one person, it was one person voted against doing that. And so that's just kind of the setup for what, what we're faced with tonight is ratifying that or acting.
The resolution.
Okay, I need him to give his name and address.
Mike Saiters, W312N1055, Fairfield, where you deal with him?
Great, thank you.
Okay, so what, what you have in front of you tonight is a resolution which would grant the 60-day extension requested. But it requires that the dismissal to the city planner be by May 21st. I think the, and the staff meeting following the Plan Commission was some confusion about, there was a May 31st date in there, but the resolution says has to be submitted by May 21st, so that gives the city planner an opportunity to review it and get the information in the packet prior to the meeting. So that date is what's used. The other thing I would point out to you is that the, the resolution, if approved, would, while it would grant a 60-day extension on the baffling and the sound abatement, it also requires the fencing information be submitted by that, that expiration date, which is July 30th as well. The original CU required a submission but didn't have a date, so that, that's going to be tied into it as well, but it's submitted. This afternoon or today, we did receive an email letter from Attorney Rosemig advising that the club, and Mike is here, is aware of the conditions in the resolution, both the May 21st date and the, that the fencing has to be in by July 30th. And in the letter, she said, Mike, that you were trying to get ahold of Gendusa Engineering to let them know and bring them up to date, but she, as of the letter, she said you hadn't been able to get in touch with them. So I don't know if you can, pardon?
They didn't return any calls or correspondence.
Okay, but.
Hey, Mike, please just speak a little closer than Mike, so people can hear you.
There was no, no return call or correspondence.
Okay. The other, final thing I would point out to you, though, is that even though this extension, if approved, you know, would be 60 days on those first two smittles, it does not change, remember, all of these conditions have to be met, and if I was in 18 months, I believe, after the conditional use was approved, and if it doesn't, it doesn't become effective. So this doesn't do anything to change those end line dates. It's only these two, baffling and sound abatement, and brings the fencing in at the same time into July.
I have a question. At the Plan Commission meeting, there was some confusion. You said that the plans had already been drafted. Can you recall that, Tim, where you said that the, you had already put together the sound abatement and baffle designs? Is that true?
I said we had the, no, no blue sky baffle completed.
So you have the, so you do have the baffles completed?
They were submitted.
When?
Probably 2009, 2012.
No, so we're not talking about that. We're talking about dismissal of the plans for this time of a full baffle system. So you haven't.
We didn't submit anything for the sound baffle.
Okay, I understand that, but have you submitted anything for the full baffle system under this CUP that is, that we're asking for?
What's, what are you referring to when you say full baffle system?
What's in the CUP? The CP, CUP in Section 10A, A spelled out that we were looking for full baffle design, full baffle design and sound abatement.
There's a drawing.
No, we didn't submit any of that.
Okay, so that hasn't been done. Okay, I just want to be clear, because I was confused about that.
But that drawing, there's a drawing depicting the type of baffle system as a part of the CU. It's, it's in there. Okay, so what the club is requesting because of the COVID situation, the extension of 60 days to get those plans completed and submitted, and the sound abatement, and, but we need, one of the conditions is there'll be an update report by May 21st.
Okay. And Jim Gendusa is your engineer for sound abatement and baffles, or do you have another engineer that's doing the sound abatement?
We're trying to get ahold of Jim to see if he'll do the sound abatement, those two.
Okay. And so, understanding that the, the end dates as far as a potential opening, when they need to have this, all these improvements in place, isn't impacted by these submission dates?
No.
I mean, we want the best plans as possible, and, and given whatever circumstances, you're asking for a delay, you're saying COVID, you know, it's whatever, you know, we want the, we want something that's gonna work. And that's really the intent of granting the 60 days. That's what I intended when I made the motion anyway.
Michelle, what's the resolution number? There wasn't a number, it was a dash, 2020- dash. What is the resolution number?
So Michelle's preference has been for us to not assign numbers until after they're approved by the council.
Okay.
So that's been a little bit of change in how we handle that.
I was, because I was gonna make the motion with the number in it, but if that's.
Right.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion then. I, I motion to approve the resolution granting the Heartland Sportsman's Club a 60-day extension from the original deadline of May 21st, 2020, to July 30th, 2020, to submit city, to the City of Delafield Plan Commission plans for sound abatement and baffle system for all arrangements pursuant to Section 10AA and 10AB of the condition use permit. Subject to compliance of the applicant with all terms of the resolution, including that not later than close of business on May 21st, the club shall submit to the city planner a written status report outlining in detail the efforts undertaken by the club to date as it relates to the requirements contained in Section 710AA and 10AB of the condition use permit, and resolve that in all other aspects, the condition use permit of March 2nd is ratified, affirmed, and signed by the official representative of the Heartland Sportsman's Club.
I love a detailed motion.
So, Michelle, I have the full written for you, so.
That would be great.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Can we just confirm who was the first and who was the second on that, please?
Wayne was the first and Jim was the second.
Thank you.
That got me on my rhythm. Any nays? Any abstentions? Hearing none? It's approved. Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Good luck. Okay, next, next item on, for the Plan Commission is Item 3B, and that is an approval that was granted unanimously at, by the, recommended unanimously by the Plan Commission. was granted unanimously at, by the, recommended unanimously by the Plan Commission for, it's our extraterritorial review of two of a lot merger, a new CSM in the town of Delafield. And that, those are property numbers DELT0810.069 and .067. So, I'll make a motion to grant that for the applicant.
L second.
That was Doug.
Doug seconded. All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Great, thank you very much.
And so, I've got a few other items just to report on for the Plan Commission meeting we had last week. First off, understanding what we're all dealing with, with the safety and conditions of the COVID situation. We did have a public meeting for the Plan Commission, and the seats are scattered around, and there's just a lot of, you know, the whole intent here is to do what we can, as safe as we can, to keep business moving, because there's a lot of people connected to, you know, new applications for new lots, subdivisions, new building approvals, et cetera. So, we appreciate people's patience in that, in dealing with the cumbersome nature of submitting comments, you know, online and other things, and just, just keep it up. If you have any questions, contact City Hall. But a few things that were approved were planned for solar collection panels at the Delhart property in the, in the Public Works storage area near the brush pickup and drop off at, or drop off, I should say. So, a little bit of revenue and a little bit of green energy coming our way in the future, and several other applications here for, for things like, you know, trying to develop a couple of difficult lots on Hillside Road, which side benefit to the city and local residents there is pedestrian access, where they don't have it now, to connect two very disparate areas of geography because of a hill involved, which is, which is fun. And something that's been talked and publicized quite a bit is we came to a final approval of the 705 Genesee Street property.
Unanimous.
Unanimous approval by Plan Commission for two buildings on the old BP gas station lot, and we were really looking forward to how that's going to come about and develop for the, for the downtown area. So, the questions are answered, how it's going to happen, what needs to get done. So, so keep your eyes on that corner, it's going to get built, and we appreciate, again, everyone's patience. There's a lot of things to go through to make sure that code was in line and that the buildings aesthetically had the right features to fit in, so looking forward to that. And that is all I have for the Plan Commission.
Great. I'm going to ask one more time for the people that are on the conference call, please mute your phones if you're not speaking. It's very distracting here, so please mute your phones. If you...
And I will unmute my phone for just a quick comment to ask everybody that's speaking. I'm having a hard time hearing you, Jim. And if Doug has said anything, I haven't caught it. Tim, I can hear you just fine, and Kent, and Tom. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you for the feedback. Okay, we'll move on to Phil's first report for the Lake Welfare Committee.
Well, there was no committee meeting for the month of April, although I look forward to having one next month and getting everything going. Nothing to report for this month.
Excellent first report.
Yeah.
Okay. Item D, Park and Rec, Mr. Grimmer.
No meeting, no report.
Thank you. Item E, Public Works, Mr. Barron.
I report that there's a meeting this week. I believe tomorrow night. Or is it Wednesday? I think...
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night.
Yeah, sounds good. F, Delhart Commission.
I will just state, although there's been no meeting since our last meeting here, the plant is getting the upgrade, going from the sand filtration system to disk filtration and UV lighting instead of chlorine, and we're just working through a couple of little change orders, a little give and take, we're still well under budget, and slightly delayed schedule, but all within this year. So, if you care, the water leaving our facility is going to be better, never.
Wonderful. We all care. All right. Police Commission, G, Mr. Sloga.
Yeah, the, there was a meeting scheduled April 30th, but got canceled, postponed without a new date, so no meeting, no report.
Great, thank you. Library Board, Ms. Valdi, I believe you did have a virtual meeting?
No, we had one, I reported on our, on our last meeting, and we will have another virtual meeting on Tuesday, May 12th.
Okay.
It will be a Zoom meeting, I'm pretty sure. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, I, Zoning Board of Appeals. Phil?
There was none in the month of April.
Great, thank you. J, Promotion and Tourism, Mr. Barron.
There'll be a meeting next week, Tuesday.
Great, thank you. K, Lake Country Fire Commission, no report that I'm aware of. L, Lake Country Fire Board, Mr. Grimmer.
Yeah, we had a meeting last week. A couple issues I'll make the council aware of. Training Center, the Training Center operations are continuing with obvious modifications to how they're getting across the teaching and the classroom activities, obviously moving to a virtual classroom instead of in-person learning. They haven't had any cancellations, so that revenue stream is still as it, as it always has been. The call activity and the revenue for the first quarter of 2020, so January, February, March, we have in the books fairly in line with budget. I think April was a little slow initially, but it has actually picked up in the last couple of weeks. When I talked to the chief last week, it was fairly typical calls. We have Lake Country Fire and Rescue transported, I believe, six COVID-positive patients or patients under investigation. And lastly, the CARES Act that was passed by Congress is distributing federal money, stimulus money in the amount of $9,500 has been allocated to Lake Country Fire and Rescue. The board, it came up for discussion and action at our last meeting. There were some issues related to any restrictions that the feds would put on us if we accepted that money. One of the restrictions is that you can't, it's for the entirety of the pandemic, apparently, so that's $9,500 for the entirety of the pandemic, and it limits your ability to, to seek the coal pay, essentially, for any COVID-positive patients. So, it prohibits billing the patient's share of any cost incurred. So, we're going to have a meeting again after further information is gathered this Thursday, investigate any other limitations that, that the federal government has passed, and come to a decision at that time. It's a take it or leave it. If you take it, it's, our understanding is it's all you get for the pandemic. If you leave it, you don't get it again. And so, that is, that's the discussion for Thursday. Any questions on any of that?
No, smart.
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Tree Board, Mr. Grimmer.
No meeting, no report.
Okay, Dear Management Committee, no meeting, no report. So, we'll move on to four unfinished business. Discussion of Possible Action to Formally Approve a Liquor License Fee Reduction by Resolution as Required. By motion the council previously approved reducing the Class B retail liquor license fees for July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021 by 50%, approval of a resolution is required to formalize this action.
I also move, Jim Barron.
I will second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I'm just curious about the procedure. I mean, we did approve, the council did approve it, but we have to do a resolution to formalize it.
Tom, you want to help us with that?
Yeah, so it does, the liquor license fees are set by our ordinance, and therefore, and our ordinance says that the fees should be set from time to time by the common council by resolution. And so, a motion was not sufficient to, to take that action.
Okay. Well, I just want to reiterate what I said back then, is that I just don't think that it's, the intent and purpose supposedly was to help through to this COVID-19 small businesses, and the amount of money that these businesses are receiving is going to be from as little as $50 to as much as 300 at the 50% reduction, and I just don't see how that's going to save any of these businesses. At the same time, other people and citizens would love to have the same type of a rebate, and I just don't think the city can afford this kind of, the $5,200, we are in a financial crunch, and to be fiscally conservative, I just don't think we should be giving a limited rebate to just a few people.
Okay.
I'll just say, you said two things. One, it's a trivial amount, and then you said, we need it, and we can't do without it.
300 is a trivial amount, 5,000 for the city, we're talking two different numbers, Tim.
Okay. So, let me finish. So, now, this is anecdotal, this is one, one owner who saw this, and she reached out and said, you don't know how much this helps, this $300 is like 5,000 to me right now, based on what's going on with her suppliers and everything else. So, and that was, that's after we made the, made the motion that we need to turn into a resolution. So, I'm sticking with my vote, I just wanted to relay the fact that it does mean a lot, and that a little bit does help, it might save an employee for a week, maybe, maybe they go under anyway, but...
And I'll just make the comments, since it was my idea to bring it up, you know, lots of decisions are being made outside of our control here at City Hall. This is one item where we do have control, and where we can do something if we so choose. And I think it's important that we try to help the small businesses, particularly these Class B license holders, where we can, and this is something where we can help them.
I, I supported the motion, and I still do. I, I think it's, even if it's a small amount of money, it's not going to kill us financially as a city, but I think more importantly, it is a gesture of support to the businesses that are the heartbeat of this community. So, I, I think it's just, just an overt action, like Kent just said, and I echo Tim's comment, that it's, it's more of the symbolism behind it rather than a huge financial impact. So, thank you.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Mayor's Report. I just want to refer you to the joint press release put up by myself and the City of Delafield Chamber of Commerce, where we're encouraging our small businesses to consider the WMC Plan to Protect Lives, Livelihoods, and Wisconsin's Future. If you had a chance to look at that press release, it gave you a link to the document. I think it's a great effort, and some, it offers tools inside of it, while not a live system yet. It's something that our small businesses, as they're trying to make this difficult decision, when we're allowed to open, the things they can plan for, and then, more importantly, it provides a green, yellow, red scale for potential shoppers, patrons of any business, to measure the risk, have their own choice as to whether they want to enter only green businesses, or yellow businesses, or stay away from red, or accept the risk for red. What's great about it is it's based on data, it can change over time, based on each geography's ratings, and number of occurrences, and it's something that the chamber and I have worked on together and came out with that joint statement, so I just would refer you to it. It was published in just about everywhere we could think of to publish it together. All right, New Business, 6A, Discussion of Possible Action as a Request by Alderperson Valdi Regarding Notice from the Wildlife and the Need Center, Asking People to Consider Stopping Any Plans for Tree Cutting, Trimming This Year Due to the Impact on Wildlife and Wildlife Habit Rehabitators. Jackie?
All right. I am, I'm right here, and if you look at page, it starts on page 123 in your e-packet, and it also links to an article that I was sent, or I actually got from the Wildlife in Need Center, just outside of Delafield. I've been involved with them for a very long time, and, but the article, I thought, made a lot of sense, and it just suggests, and I wanted to just bring it to, at a little more formal public awareness, that it's really not the best time to be trimming trees anyway. The best time is when the trees are dormant. It impacts the tree the least, and I think sometimes people, they don't necessarily, I don't know if I want to trim a tree in the dead of winter, but often I see and hear trees coming down, and this is a point in time when animals are nesting, not just birds, but squirrels and lots of creatures, and what happens is the Wildlife and Need Center typically takes a ton of them in. It's very difficult for them now, because their doors are essentially closed. They are doing some minimal care and doing the best they can, but they're just asking if we avoid disturbing nests and avoid trimming trees for the next few weeks while animals are nesting. And a lot of times, if you see orphaned animals, watch them, the parents will come and get them. It is not true that if you touch a baby bird or baby squirrel, the parent will reject them. That's a little wildlife lesson for you all. But that was just the request, and I appreciate it getting on the agenda. Thank you.
Great. Not hearing any other comments, we'll move on to 6B, Discussion of Possible Action as requested by Alderperson Valdi regarding the city's practice pertaining to filling of opening, openings on city committees, including specifically the Lake Welfare Committee. Jackie?
Yeah, there, I'm kind of a troublesome person. It came to my attention that there was an opening, and actually, I think there's more than one on Lake Welfare now, and in discussion, I have been made aware, and I, I do understand the interest in the city in having folks from all seven aldermanic districts represented on Lake Welfare. My concern is when an opening sits for years. We have some volunteers, I had found a person, a neighbor of mine, who was very interested in being on Lake Welfare, and there was a hesitancy to fill a vacant spot in hopes that someone might fill it. And I'm just wondering, is that something, maybe not necessarily right this minute, but something we can discuss or think about as a common council, about how long do we wait? And what, you know, is it in the city's best interest to leave openings? Do you know, by chance, how many openings there are on Lake Welfare right now?
Yeah, as of the approving of the last appointments from the mayor, there was one opening on that committee, and it remains, to my understanding, one opening on that committee. And remember, the committee has 11 individuals on it in total, so...
Okay, so there, it's the one, the floating, or the one that you're hoping for, the outside of, you know, non-Lake bordering districts, correct?
Well, the city code states that the committee should be, should be made up of representatives of all seven districts within the city, I forget the exact wording, but where possible, meaning, it's not a requirement that you have all districts represented, but I'll suffice it to say it's strongly encouraged to do so. So, the committee has been, been held as it is today with the one opening. We did have a person from District 7 who was on the committee for, I'm going to say, about four or five months last year, but they didn't stay very long for personal reasons, and the position came back open. So, I've, you know, requested on multiple occasions to work with the alder folks, because number four, and seven, and sometimes five, these are the districts that don't have any lake properties, right?
Mega Wicca Lake. Naguwicka Lake.
Yes, Naguwicka Lake, yes. But they do cover both lakes, so having somebody from those districts historically, for many years, having been the chairman of that, that committee for 13 years, is a very difficult task. So when we look at what we have there today, we have, you know, two from District 1. I mean, that's the district that I live in, and I have no less than five people from District 1. In fact, because this item was on the agenda, I got another one today, that have expressed interest over the last couple of years or few years of wanting to serve on the Lake Welfare Committee. District 2, we have two. District 3, we have three. District 5, we have one. District 6, we have one, and an alterperson from that district. Then we have Louis Scope, who is the Neshota rep, and the one place that is vacant is the one that we have. And so I'll just reiterate that if anyone in District 4 or District 7 who complies with the code, that would like to be appointed to that, please reach out to us. I think this is, I'm glad you brought it up, Jackie. This is a great opportunity to try to get that word out yet again, right?
Yeah, no, I agree. And I would just ask one other thing, and that is, because this is not, this has happened with me before, when I'm trying to recruit people, you know, fill out an application to be on a committee, they don't always hear back from the city. And we all know, it's hard sometimes to get folks to volunteer, because it does take time. And so if we can maybe make it more of a regular policy, that when we see those applications come in, that they get a call, and just explain what's going on. Because I get what you're saying totally.
Yep, yep. And I can tell you, for the Lake Welfare Committee, I have, to my recollection, since I've been mayor, I've called every person. It's not like we have, Lake Welfare Committee, we have probably four to one, all other committees of people that would like to be on it. It's a very popular committee. Planning Commission being second, right? So.
So it's a popular committee, yet you've refused to appoint me when I've asked to be appointed to the committee.
Well, the problem is, the vacant position that's open is for a citizen, not an alterperson.
It doesn't say, yes, you can, you can have.
You can't have two alterpersons on a committee.
That's not true.
Wayne, Kent is correct. I'm looking at it right here. It says that the committee shall consist of 11 members as follows. One member of the common council, one representative from the village of Neshota, and nine City of Delafield citizen members.
Right. If I can be a citizen, doesn't say it's limited that there can only be one alderman.
It says one member of the common council.
As a representative of the common council.
To help us find somebody in your district, and the same goes for you, Tim, anybody you can find.
The only, when I asked this before, the only committee that requires that there only be one alderman is Plan Commission. The other committees, there's been other, multiple aldermen on other committees in the past. The only one that I know of when I read it was, Plan Commission was the only one that you can have only one alderman. Which committee had multiple alderpeople on it? There have been, I can't recite them offhand, but I don't think there's any code that says that. For sure.
The only one I'm aware of would be Lake Country Fire Board or Border Review.
That's not the reason you gave me before, though.
Wayne, we can take it offline if you'd like, but I mean, I'm regurgitating what I've shared with you in the past.
I volunteered to be on the committee.
Yeah, I appreciate that, yep. Okay. Any other discussion on this topic?
Thank you.
Yep. We'll move on to the next item. 6D, discussion of possible action regarding proposed temporary change in the compensatory time policy for non-exempt employees to be effective for calendar year 2020 only. Mr. Hafner?
Yeah, so the current emergency order with the City of Delafield is scheduled to end, I believe, on May 16th, would be the original 60-day order. And the recommendation is that we keep that declaration of emergency in effect, so that we can ensure our ability to receive funding from FEMA throughout the duration of the emergency, and so that we're not continuously doing this over and over again. I did put language in there, tying our state of emergency to the state of Wisconsin's state of emergency, or as terminated earlier by action of the common council.
Do you need a motion?
We do.
Go ahead.
Jim Barron, I'll move.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Passes. Great, thank you. Number 7, reports to city officials, administrator.
Uh, we've actually got a 6D item to take up first, right?
Did I miss one?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's an item missed.
Oh, which one did I miss, Michelle?
6D.
Okay, thought that's the one I read. No? C or D?
D, as in dog.
Okay, discussion.
I think that he read off D, and then Tom talked about C.
Oh, okay, okay.
Oh.
It worked. It worked for me. We passed a resolution. Let's go to 7, let's go to 6D then.
Got it. Discussion of possible action regarding proposed temporary change in compensatory time policy for non-exempt employees to be effective for calendar year 2020 only.
Yeah, so our Public Works employees have been very cooperative in being open to the changes that we've needed to implement with regards to response to the COVID-19 pandemic, which included for the first four weeks, we did full isolation of crews. The crews utilized their own time off for that. The council allowed some of that time off to be in the form of sick leave, but the, some of the crew, as evidenced by email in your packet, also chose to use some vacation time, some of their compensatory time off. And the employees have come back to me and asked for consideration of a temporary change to our compensatory time off policy. And they're asking for the change to be effective just for calendar year 2020. Normally, they can only accumulate up to a maximum balance of 48 hours of overtime that they can convert it into compensatory time off instead of overtime pay. And normally, that can't be rebuilt after they use it. And now they're asking for consideration of rebuilding it after they use it, with the qualifications that it can only be rebuilt when it's used for COVID-19-related reasons, and that the maximum amount that they could use for comp time off in 2020 would be 96 hours. The positive with regards to a change like this is, ultimately will save us a little bit of money when we are compensating people with time off as opposed to money. The negative is it affects our availability of staff going forward. This is something that the city has implemented with its, with our police department on a permanent basis, and the Public Works employees are asking for consideration for calendar year 2020.
And the police department, it's part of the union contract, right?
It is, yes.
So, you're, I think we should do it, but the main problem is you get down to November, December, all of a sudden, they want to pull some time off when you need snow plowing, or is that?
No, it's understood that there's management rights with regards to allowing comp time. So they do need department head approval for taking comp time. And it's well-understood by all of our employees, the responsibility they have for emergency response. And I am highly confident that none of our employees would even consider asking for comp time when it's snowing out and we need to be plowing roads.
So, and this was initiated by us because we wanted to have some employees not here, and they wanted to be paid, so then they use sick for some, vacation for some.
Yeah, so they were allowed to utilize sick time, and most of the time off, they chose to use sick time. But some employees, and I don't fully understand their reasoning, but they chose to use comp time or vacation time. A lot of them, you know, are younger, and they understand the importance of building up a sick bank as kind of a short-term liability insurance plan for themselves. But yeah, that is the reason for it.
I think it makes sense for what it's worth.
I'll make, this is Jim Barron, I'll make a motion that we approve the request for this year only, where they can refill their comp time, and the maximum is 96 hours.
I will second.
Great. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay, back to the regular order. 7A, administrator.
Yeah, two quick items. First of all, the one on your agenda is the gale farm update. We did receive notice from the gale family that they will be planting the fields with corn. I believe that that has already been planted. They indicated the planting would happen in late April. And they did know spring manure injection. They plan on harvesting the corn in October. And then it's undetermined at this point whether they intend to do a fall manure injection, but if they do one, that would happen in October or November. And we should receive another update from them by July 1st.
Right, so they're fully compliant with the timeline, they're providing the answers as required by our agreement.
Absolutely. The other thing. What was that?
I'm sorry, I just said thank you for that.
Oh, you're welcome. The other thing that I just want to briefly mention is, under the state's safer-at-home order update, our library was able to start curbside drop-off of materials. That started last week. It's been good to see a steady flow of vehicles coming in and picking up their materials. So I just want to make sure that the public was aware that that service is now available. And for further details on how to participate in that, please see the City of Delafield library website.
Great, thank you, Tom.
Yep.
Okay, 7B, clerk?
I just have the discussion action on the voucher list, which I'm hoping was still physically down there by Doug's seat.
It started there, and Wayne's got it now.
This is Jim Barron, I'll so move to approve vouchers.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Passes. Okay, I will refer you, number 8, to correspondence. Brooke?
What, 7C? Did I miss 7C? Oh, I'm sorry. 7C, council request for future agenda items. Any items you guys would like to add?
I actually have a question. This came up with the situation with COVID-19 and meeting at the council chambers, and I wondered if there might be, and this should go on the public record, some discussion or a special meeting that we would have to notify the public of, on how we discuss and determine where, whether we're going to do a remote meeting or in-person meeting. Tom, you want to help me?
So are you asking that to be on the next agenda, Jackie?
No, I'm asking it if we need to have a special meeting. There's not really a place to ask except here.
So Jackie, the first thing would be if you're asking for that to be on an agenda, and then to indicate if you would prefer that it be done in a special meeting, so that be decided before our next regular meeting.
Correct. So I guess I'm asking if we can have a special, short meeting, virtual one, to determine how we determine where and when, or not when, but how we have our next meeting on the 18th.
So if you're asking for that, then staff will coordinate such a meeting?
I am. I think we need it.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Seeing none. We'll move on to 8, Wakasha-McGuanego Cooperative Plan correspondence, and the Brookfield-Wakasha Cooperative Plan correspondence. Seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at, I'll say, 8 o'clock even. Wow, that was nice. Thank you all.
Thank you.